You're listening to Popcorn in Politics, What's the Real Deal? Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney and Derek J. Wilson. Asking the hard-hitting questions you want answers to. From political leaders and political hopefuls from around the world.
Always happens, always forget to cut the video off, right? Welcome up, welcome everybody to another edition of Popcorn in Politics. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney, along with my co-host Derek J. Wilson and our guest today, Mr. Nikita Hemingway. Welcome, welcome, welcome everybody.
Welcome.
So listen, we're streaming live right now. We're streaming live on Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, Twitter, Roku and American One Radio. So we're all over the place. American One Radio, thank you to American One Radio for streaming us live. Happy to be here with you guys, happy to partner with you to bring you some great community leaders and talk about the things that are important to us in this week. So we got Nikita here, who is, Nikita here, who was actually running for office. But I gotta tell y'all, the big talk this week is all about redistricting and, oh my God, drawing lines and erasing lines and just doing some crazy stuff. So thank you Nikita for joining us first of all.
Thank you for having me, excited to be here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So listen, we were, let me just start out saying this, we were together yesterday Derek and I, we was at a function for Brian Whiteside, who is running for reelection for Solicitor General here in Gwinnett County. And Representative Donna McLeod was there and she was very emotional. And as I was walking out the door, she grabbed my hand like this and she said, they're just driving us crazy. She's like, they are just doing crazy stuff. And I said to myself, wow, like, so I said, what happened? She said, right now, I guess the Republicans is just doing, they're just doing all kinds of crazy things right now. And she said, they were on one side of the street and they had to run to the other side of the street just to vote on some bill that they were trying to pass. And had they not gotten there in time, the bill would have passed without their vote. And she was so emotional Nikita, um, I mean, it was, it was like, what's the matter? And she had just came from a funeral from a sixteen-year-old who had got killed. So that could have been part of it too, but she just, she just grabbed my hand, she's like, it's just, they're just driving us crazy. You know, and I was like, wow, that seems like a lot of pressure. So I started off telling that story to say, why do you want to get in this game?
Um, so I ask myself that every single day. Uh, because running for office, there's tremendous sacrifice. Um, and that is something that we don't talk about. Oftentimes people look at politicians and they think, oh, you're doing this because this is your career objective. But many of us are just regular everyday people like voters in this district. I'm a farmer, I'm a realtor, I'm a mom, I have four kids from twenty-four down to four. Um, and you know, family and, and growing our business and just living my life is very important to me. However, being a Georgia native and looking at, you know, what we're facing in this state just historically and in the present time, you know, gone are the days where we're silent and we put, um, changes in our world on autopilot, hoping others fix it. We all have got to be an active participant, you know, in changing the narrative of our outcomes. We, every person has the right and the duty to be the superhero in their life. And we do that by volunteering, we do that by voting, we do that by running for office, we do that by supporting each other, solving problems. Use whatever talents God has given you to be a part of the win. So for me, running in the state of Georgia, I have a great mind around farming and, 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 um, real estate, um, and also a good understanding of the laws and what it's gonna take for businesses, farms to be successful, but also food security, you know? So these are the things that I'm passionate about, this is what I'm drawn to and this is what I am committing, you know, to helping solve and bringing Georgia forward.
You know, a lot of people don't even know that we have food insecurities. I've just, I've been up since probably six o'clock this morning. I had to go do like a, um, some community service for my sorority. And one of the things we did was make a donation for people to make sure they had like meals for Thanksgiving. Because there are truly food insecurities here in the state of Georgia. So the fact that, so for people who don't know, let them know what, uh, what, uh, what seat you're running for here in the state of Georgia.
Yeah, so I'm running for Commissioner of Agriculture for the state of Georgia. And that impacts so many aspects of our daily lives. Um, it's really important for, for the voters and the people of Georgia to understand what this department does and how it can bring a better future for the citizens. Agriculture is the number one industry in the state of Georgia. It contributes seventy billion to our economy, creates more than three hundred and fifty thousand jobs. The Department of Agriculture mandate controls grocery stores, fuels and measures, your pets, animals, um, consumer affairs, um, all of produce that's, uh, you know, um, is cultivated in Georgia, but also manufactured foods that are here. So it's, it's a really, it casts a wide test to what it does. And most importantly, anything that you can look at that keeps your life running, its origin starts in agriculture, especially here in Georgia.
I have a question, so I'm looking at your website, uh, which is nikita hemingway.com. Uh, how many, oh, what's the percentage of, of women that are in farming here in Georgia? And would you happen to know how many of them hold leadership in throughout the state?
Yes, so, um, women make up a great majority of the farmers. I'd say close thirty percent of the farmers in the state of Georgia are women. And less than one point five percent of them hold leadership positions. Now, don't hold on to that first number because I don't have all my data in front of me. But it's certainly not about, um, how we think about, it's thirty-four percent, yes. So it's a lot about how we think about opportunities in the state of Georgia and who is actively involved. Women have been in agriculture since the beginning of time. You know, um, me, my heritage starts in this state. And we've been able to trace my ancestry back to the first slave, which was Sac, who was a woman, who came from Africa and who was a farmer, she was a rice farmer. So, um, having women involved and having a seat at the table is very important. But also having representation from all aspects of agriculture is important.
Yeah.
So Nikita, there's a lot going on right now about redistricting and also redrawing lines. How does that affect your campaign or does it affect it at all?
So it doesn't affect my campaign done, but what it does affect is the, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit.
Okay, so what I was stating is that it, oh, I am, okay, is this?
Yes, kind of like, that's better. Uh-oh. Say something? Okay.
So you were saying it doesn't affect you, but?
Okay, raised there isn't a direct. It doesn't affect the citizens of Gwinnett County, you know? And it doesn't matter what side of the aisle you are on. What matters is that you're heard, you know? It doesn't matter what your personal dynamics are, it matters that your voice is heard. And I think that's the one part of the conversation that people don't want to have, you know? Representation, anytime one party majority is not in the greatest benefit of the people. We've got to create balance. The way the Republicans are going about doing what they are doing here in Gwinnett County is completely wrong. However, where there's only one party that is a majority, it frees out the voices of others. We got to what it is, it's completely wrong. And maybe motives behind all of this is completely wrong. But at the end of the day, it makes us no better than them. When we can acknowledge that everybody needs to be heard, which is to be one is fairly represented. There never needs to be a need for them. So that's my perspective.
Well, and I agree, like, we, we all have to think about the people that are involved right now. And I think, you know, I've always said this too, like, I, I have to think about the people. When I think about, um, and there's a gentleman who hit us up there, he wanted to be on the show. He's like some kind of psychologist about why people vote the way they do on the psychological level. And so we're probably gonna get him on the show, because my thing has always been, despite party lines, what is it that you need? You know what I mean? What is it that you need for your family? Like ninety-nine percent of us are not in the one percent, we're like in the ninety-nine percent. And it always baffles me about, you know, when people go to vote, are you not voting for the needs of your family? Are you just voting based on belief? Derek talked about something really interesting, I don't know, did we talk about that on air? When you were saying that in Texas, you know, a lot of Mexican voted Republican? And I'm like, why would they do that? And you can't explain, was that a song off-air on there Derek?
Well, that was, uh, it was off-air, but it was an article that we posted. And let me correct you, is, is, is a lot of Hispanics.
I'm sorry Hispanics.
Yeah, because, you know, as we all know, Hispanic is more than just Mexico. But that particular article was talking about Hispanics in Texas. Because I have been voting, uh, Republican or they're, the trend is they're voting more Republican. It's because, uh, the Democrats have been focusing on immigration issues and putting it in Spanish and automatically assuming that all Hispanics in Texas are immigrants. Uh, just like how, you know, you know, society put all black people in, in a basket, you know? Uh, they, they're doing that heavily in Texas. And come to find out that, uh, which I knew because I grew up in Texas, but a large number of Hispanics in Texas, Texas are actually native of Texas. Texas used to be part of Mexico. So obviously if they was born in Mexico, Texas, you know, and then Texas seceded and became Texas and then, then became a state, they are native there, they're not quote-unquote immigrants. You know, same thing with all the western states from California to Texas, Nevada, Arizona, all of them used to be part of Mexico. Uh, so is, is, is wrong for anyone to assume that just because you're Hispanic, you're automatically an immigrant. And so, and so that's what the issue is in Texas. Um, but I know that, uh, Georgia, uh, has that same issue per se when it comes down to Democrats connecting to, uh, you know, minorities. Uh, but I guess it helps that the Republicans are not even attempting to connect to minorities. So my question is, uh, to you Nikita, uh, what do you see or how do you see your campaign connecting, uh, with, you know, the people who are usually ignored, uh, in these campaigns? And because you're running a statewide campaign, so how do you, and how will you, you reach out and connect to those, you know, groups, you know, the Pakistanis or the Hispanics or the, or the immigrants? Because we, uh, I don't, maybe you can help me out with that one. I don't know the, the numbers here in Georgia, but I do know a, a large number of, um, immigrants have at some point worked in agriculture. So how does that fit here in Georgia? That was a loaded question.
And I, I think she has a delay. Having a little tech issues.
Okay, I'm sorry, the light's so weird because it's saying I have full signal here. Um, so, um, several things, uh, um, let me start with something state in extreme, which is the fact that we are not single-issue voters. And I think, uh, sometimes in, in the spirit of politics, people forget that voters are real people. We're all multi-dimensional. You know, I'm African-American, I'm a mother of forties and I like gardening, farming and, you know, and, and trading seeds. But I'm also a tech geek, um, and I, I, you know, and I'm very much into innovation. And, um, and I've worked in the tech sector, you know? And I'm very much in the finance and individuals. And I think that's where our party in politics get it wrong. You know, when you're talking about workers and farmworkers rights, the image that is often drawn is that is a connection to an immigration issue. But what people are not realizing, especially here in the state of Georgia, is the most farmworkers in rural parts are American citizens that have nine to five jobs who are not earning livable wages. And so they go in moonlight at farms picking tomatoes, picking blueberries, just to make additional money so that they can provide for their families. It's still not enough. So the messaging is not about what we think people need. It's out and doing exactly what they're not my narrative of what should be. It should be Nikita Hemingway and any other politician getting out here, talking with you, what it is that you want this position and this job and that should be the message.
I agree.
If we do that, especially as Democrats, we will see more voter, we will advance the cause and the best for people.
Derek, you want to say something?
Oh no, I was just saying, uh, I, I agree. And, um, we need more people like, like you, uh, out here on these trails and, and, um, you know, getting involved and, and meeting these people. Um, when are you, are you having any type of, uh, virtual or in-person meeting, greets or opportunities where voters can, um, you know, speak with you directly, learn more about your campaign, get involved, you know?
Uh-oh.
So we are, we're actually, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Here for next year and, um, are trying to make that work for the voters across the state. Georgia has a hundred and fifty-nine counties. Um, so there is a lot of traveling that has to be done for these races. What we'll tell you is that, um, what's really important to me because I have my family structure doesn't get lost in the process of campaigning. Um, and I don't, and putting my, saying that, what I am saying is that, um, we have opened the door for voters to contact me on any of the social media platforms to have one-on-one conversations with me. They can email us, uh, from our website. Um, and then we're inviting them to the mini-town halls that we plan for next year and also the party and, 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 um, can't take too long answering your questions, but there are definitely many ways in which a voter can reach us.
Nikita, what's your, what's your, um, what's your social media and what's your website?
So our website is nikita hemingway.com. Uh, e-mail hemingway.com. Our handle is, uh, nikita hemingway at Facebook and at Instagram and nikitaforgeorgia. And I'll tell you guys a little secret. I am the only, I am blessed to be the only Nikita Hemingway in the world. So if you Google my name, you will find me.
Oh wow.
Wow.
Yeah, I can't say that, you know, you Google Derek Wilson, you, you get thirty pages.
So Nikita, thank you so much for taking some time out. I know you're a busy mom, a busy farmer, I gotta go visit your, where's your farm located? Where, where's your farm located?
Our farm is in Lawrenceville. And, um, we are gonna start doing tours before, um, the primaries, but definitely we'll invite you guys out.
I would love that, I'm in Lawrenceville, so please be sure to let me know when that happens because I would love to come out. So thank you again for joining us today. Um, hopefully we'll get you back when, you know, the victory has been won, so thank you.
Yes, yes, I'm looking forward to that exclusive, once you win.
Yes, thanks Nikita.
Bye.
We're happy, and I'm gonna put you to work. Hit stuff with me, everything.
All right, you're welcome.
All right.
Bye-bye. So Derek, you know, we've been busy, we've been, um, we've been talking about this whole, you know, redistrict, why can't I say that, redistricting?
I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a challenge across the, uh, the world. Redistricting, it's, it's too many syllables in it.
I know, it's like, I feel like I'm like, like redistricting. So, you know, are we gonna have nine commissioners here in Gwinnett County plus a chairwoman? You think we are?
Uh, well, as, uh, we stated earlier, the, the GOP is in the majority. So, um, you know, the GOP put a plan together, uh, that, that says ten commissioners is, is, is safe to say that, uh, GOP majority will win. Um, I'm interested to see what steps that the, you know, the county will do. You know, are the Democratic Party will do? I mean, there can be some legal actions to hopefully either halt or slow down this process. But, uh, I recommend anyone that's interested, they may want to start, uh, getting their stuff together because if it does get approved, there will be an election, uh, in, in May, May twenty-four, which is the primary, uh, and then, you know, November is the general election. So, uh, I, you know what they say, you know, hope for the best, prepare for the worst?
Yeah.
So if you live in Gwinnett County, you know, hoping that, you know, the best is them not to have this go through because what it does is it, it limits, uh, the, the, the power of the, the chair, the chairperson, uh, you know? Which I find highly suspicious being that the first time in this county history that they ever have a black person, uh, as the county chair, then they decide to limit the power of the chair. You know, the power of the chair, uh, or the voting of the chair was never an issue in this two-hundred-year history. Then all of a sudden, you know, not only is it a Democrat, but it's a black Democrat and it's a black woman, oh, we gotta minimize her role, like, you know?
That is sad, that's very sad. You know, I think what's crazy for me is that they see nothing wrong with that, you know? For them, it's just, I guess it's just business as usual for them, you know? Um, I think it's disgusting though. It makes me sick in my stomach when I think about it because I think they sit there and they, and they, and they, they look at that, they look at her role and putting, giving us five new commissioners is gonna take her power away, right? That's like a slap on the face on both sides. And I, I think it's disgusting. And, and, and so I always, my question is this, why is it that we can't do anything about the way they do things? Like, if they bypass, like, the protocol or how this should, should have played out, they bypassed it, they just did their own thing. And you and I talked about this off-air, but maybe you can share with our viewers, there was a protocol that should have been followed to make this happen and they bypassed it. And then there's nothing that we can seem to do about that, why, why is that?
Well, so they supposedly bypassed it because, you know, this is a state of emergency, you know, situation. So because the fact that we are having an election in May. So, um, in order for these maps, as far as for the, the county commissioner, as well as the school board, in order for the maps to be accepted and go into place and then, you know, move forward, it has to be done now because of the elections in May. If they make, so one, one goal is to make the school board nonpartisan, uh, which election is in May. Nonpartisan elections are during the primary elections, which are in May. Uh, so that's why that's a, an emergency, uh, for the school board. And the same thing for the, uh, commission, May is the primary. So in order for this to be approved and be ready and give, now this is their explanation, and give the election officials time to get, you know, qualified candidates and get the ballots in place, they have to do it now versus doing it in a regular session because again, the election is in May. Uh, so that's for Democrat or Republican, anyone who wants to run for this seat. The interesting thing for me is, um, you know, I've always was in active and organized sports or anything. And, uh, you know, one of the things you're, you're taught in youth sports is when you cheat, you know, karma can always come back and bite you. And so I'm sitting back, just wanna watch it all through. Because let's say that the, you know, the GOP gets what they want and they get it pushed through and yay, now we got nine board, I mean, ten board members and, and now we got a nonpartisan election and yet the Democrats win them all.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, so I'm just interested to sit back because then what's gonna be the issue then? You know, because now you got, you got ten Democratic, uh, you know, elected officials on the board. You have these nonpartisan school board members that are, uh, part of the Democratic Party. What is the explanation then? You know, then now it's gonna be another fire, you know? Uh, I heard someone say they create the fires, you know? You know, they created this, this, this state of emergency type issue. And then, uh, you know, now they have to put it out after they didn't create it, the, the, the issue. So, um, it's gonna be interesting, but like I say, I'm just sitting back and waiting because, uh, Gwinnett, Gwinnett County in Georgia is not blue because of the lines. Gwinnett County in Georgia is blue because of the residents of this county. Now, are there some pockets of the county that may not be as blue as other? Yes, uh, but I will be, it would be interesting to see how many of those pockets out of this, this nine district map that they created are actually going to be red. Um, I see out of the nine, I see at least five or six of them still remaining blue. So regardless of the, uh, the map, I still think that, you know, Gwinnett County statistically from two thousand sixteen, eighteen and twenty has been trending blue. Twenty, it became, well, it was blue for Hillary. And then in the midterms, it was blue, that was, uh, that was Stacey Abrams. And then last year, uh, in twenty twenty, it was blue and the whole state became blue. So, uh, I, we shall see, it should be interesting though, we shall see. And I'm just gonna sit back and, uh, and watch because I want to be one of the ones laughing on, uh, Election Day. And, you know, as they try to overtake the, uh, the county commissioner because all of a sudden there's too many, too many African-Americans and too many Democrats on the board that's been ran by Republicans for the last twenty-some, since the eighties, so thirty-some years.
Thirty, yeah, thirty-some years.
So that's, uh, that's interesting. Now we in the state of emergency because we got Negroes and Democrats in office.
Yeah, which is crazy. I mean, you know what, what, what gets me though, they just don't have a conscience though, they don't care. Like, they don't care what we say, they're gonna do what they wanna do. And we have, let me say this, I have a conscience, right? I, I, I'm gonna speak for myself, I have a conscience. And I think there is nothing I can do in good conscience, knowing that it's gonna destroy somebody's life or destroy their livelihood or destroy their community. In good conscience, I can do those things, they don't care.
No, they don't.
It's all about the power, like, they wanna have all this power, and I don't, why?
And plus, they love the uninformed voter. Uh, because I think we spoke on this, I don't know if it was online or offline, but a lot of the, um, poor white people that, that supported Trump didn't realize that they were voting for a person that was detrimental to their, to their livelihood. You know, um, when the Republican Party saying they want to scratch, um, um, food stamps and, and other services, not realizing that eighty-five percent of the population that are on food stamp are Caucasian. You know, and the argument, oh, well, that's because Caucasians are, are, you know, number one and, you know, number one largest population in the country. Regardless if you're the largest population in the country or not, you're the largest users of, of, of these benefits that are being cut. And when they got cut, or when they start cutting, uh, of the Affordable Health Care Act, as they call it, Obamacare, they still, some of them came to the light, it was like, well, whoa, wait a minute. they still, some of them came to light, was like, well, whoa, wait a minute, these are affecting me. But a lot of the uninformed voters continue to vote against their better, you know, they're, I ain't gonna say they better judgment, but against their livelihood, you know? If I needed this to survive, but yet I support a candidate or a person or a party that's continuing to cut these things, you know, it's, 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 it's interesting to say that, you know, you complain, but then you vote, you vote against your, you know, your need, I think your needs, and.
You know, my husband, my husband used to work with this guy, and it was amazing. He used to work with this guy a while ago, probably about, well, right around the time I met him, which was about twenty-some years ago, about twenty years, yeah, twenty years. He used to work with this guy, white guy, right? And he was talking, they had a conversation, and the guy, you know, Derek, and it's so funny, cuz he was an uninformed voter. He was uninformed about life, right? One, he had never really worked with black people. Now, granted, he and my husband can't really be friends. We went to his daughter's wedding, the whole nine, but he had never really worked with black folk. And it was crazy, because the more he worked with my husband, my husband had to educate him on like, man, that's, like, a lot of his beliefs, was like totally blown away once he started working with all these black people, and I just think that's so sad. Like, you have these beliefs, and it's because you haven't been exposed to somebody, so you just, even though you see, in the media, this is how some things are, and this is how some things are, you just tend to stand up, stay on this side and not even try to learn the other side. So, my husband said to him one time, just what you just said, he was talking about how it was more black people on welfare, and my husband was like, that's not true. He's like, how could you say that's not true? He said, cuz it's more white people than black folks. And he was, he was stunned. He was like, wait a minute, but that's the truth. And so, but because you're so uninformed, and you're so stuck in the ways, the way you think about things, you miss, you're missing out on so many things that could hurt you and your family because of the way you think, your ideology about, well, I'm a Republican, I'm gonna vote this way, because I just think that's so crazy.
And what people don't realize, the way that the US, uh, you know, has counted people for so long, is, uh, is, is, is really interesting, because, uh, truth be told, that nine times out of ten, uh, at this point, white, European, Caucasians are, are, are probably the minority, to be totally honest, uh, but the reason why the census data continues to show, uh, white Caucasians as, uh, you know, the majority, is because if you're not black, if you're not Asian, you're Caucasian. And people are like, whoa, whoa, well, that's not true. Yeah, it is true, because first, if you look at it, it asks for your ethnicity, and I can't say it, right? Yeah, and it say Hispanic or non-Hispanic. Okay, well, let's say you Hispanic. Okay, wow, okay, so you push yes, Hispanic. And then it asks you for your race. And on the race, I have never seen a race that says, well, I'm Mexican, or I'm Honduran. Uh, the races, white, Caucasian, African-American, Native Indian, uh, Pacific Islander, Asian. And so, if you're Hispanic, you're gonna, I mean, I'm assuming, but a lot of people, which is what was big in Texas, a lot of Hispanics will, will, will check Hispanic, and then for race, they will put white, I mean Caucasian.
Wow.
And so now, when we're running the numbers, the Caucasian number is, is, is ninety-two percent. While the, you know, so that's, that's why the numbers keep looking the way it look, as far as Caucasians, because if you're not black, if you're not, you know, Native American, if you're not, uh, the, the As- Asians, uh, uh, Pacific Islander, if you're not, if you don't fall under those racial categories, you are considered Caucasian, which is white. That's why they ask you, are you Hispanic or non-Hispanic? And then it asks you for your race. So, I think that's, that's purp- purposeful, because, you know, that keeps the numbers up. Uh, I know for a fact that, uh, I think I mentioned this as well in, in a previous, that on birth certificates, I, I, I don't know what birth certificates are currently, but if, if, if any Hispanic that, that was born in the US, look at their birth certificate. Uh, I, I would love to, you know, leave a comment, I would love to hear what your birth certificate states. But I know for a fact that I've seen a Hispanic birth certificate that has, that has them classified as Caucasian. And then it say of Hispanic heritage, yes or no, you put yes, it didn't say what country. But the, the race is classified as Caucasian.
Wow.
And so, when they say, oh, we got, we got eighty-five percent Caucasians in the country, eh, that's not technically true. You have, you probably have eighty-five percent people that you have classified as Caucasian, but are they really Caucasian?
Wow.
You know.
Wow.
That's a whole nother, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, you know, I, I feel like there's still a lot of work to do, and I don't know if we're ever gonna get past all the work that we have to do in this country, heck, heck in this whole world, because the more we try to correct the issues, they find a way to go around. I feel like the Godfather, remember, so Derek likes to quote movies, y'all, but I'm about to quote one of my favorites. So, remember the Godfather, when he was trying to get out, he said, every time I try to get out, they pull me back in.
Yeah, pull me back.
Every time we figure out one way, they come up with a different way to go around it.
That's why historically, African-American numbers have sat at thirteen percent. Every census, we're always thirteen percent, every census. Like, that really don't make sense. I mean, every census, and since the history of censuses, the African-American population has always hovered around thirteen percent. That makes no sense to me. You know, thirteen percent. Every other population is growing, except the African-American population.
Hmm. Now, I wonder has anybody even thought the question is, I mean, you have just said it, but has anyone who are in the census department say, you know what, this doesn't make sense, we need to go back and look at this. For the last twenty years, it's been thirteen percent. We know they had kids, so what, what's the problem?
I, I haven't heard anyone calling out, uh, I haven't heard anyone call out the fact that Hispanics are being classified as Caucasians. So, I mean, again, but if I, I would have known, I would not have known that if I, you know, was in a situation where I'm looking at a Hispanic birth certificate, and I'm like, oh, wow, you know, so, um, yeah, you know, but it, go, to go back to what you mentioned in Texas, you know, that's what the article was saying. A lot of Texans, that Hispanics that been in Texas for generations and generations, you know, they consider themselves white. You know, according to the article, I'm not saying that's the case, I don't want anyone to say that, I'm saying that. According to the article on CNN, which is posted on our, uh, on Facebook page, it stated that, uh, that's why, uh, a lot of Hispanics in Texas have been siding and voting with the GOP, is because, you know, they, they consider themselves white, and they, they, you know, they didn't like that the, the immigration, um, push that the Democrats was pushing towards them, you know? And, and one of the cities that they did a case study on, or the counties, was McAllen, Texas. This is a city that's on the border, like, on the border of Mexico, and, uh, a lot of, I, I mean, that city went heavily, or that county went heavily for Trump. I mean, that's a, that's a, probably a ninety-eight percent Hispanic town, and they voted heavily for Trump. Uh, so, uh, that's a problem that, that, that the Democrats will, will, will need to face, but as I stated before we went on air, that this, this whole redistricting thing has, is, is, is like, is, is a nationwide pandemic, say, so to speak, when it come down to the, the Republicans are just, you know, I mean, they see the writing on the wall, that, you know, I don't wanna be cliche and say the blue wave, but they see that Democrats are picking up steam, uh, Trump was very detrimental to their, uh, party. Although some of them don't want to admit it, they feel like Trump is the savior of the party, but, uh, if you look at the, 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 the movements that they're making, uh, if you feel like your party is strong, and you feel like, you know, Trump as your leader, you wouldn't be doing the things that they're doing across the country in these redistricting. You have, you know, you have Supreme Court judges in, in states like Wisconsin, that are, uh, you know, throwing out maps, GOP maps, saying that they are unconstitutional. You have, uh, you have the Democrats suing, uh, you know, GOP leaders in South Dakota. You know, I mean, y- y- you just go down the list, in Utah, uh, and, and Virginia, i- it's, it's just, you know, if you feel like your party is strong, you wouldn't be doing, you wouldn't be gerrymandering, uh, gerr- gerrymandering these districts in order to benefit your party more than if you already feel like you in a safe space.
But Derek, here's the thing, so, Trump, Trump was detrimental to the party, but he's coming back, he said. Now, what I, what I read yesterday was that Pence is gonna run against him. And, and, and in the meantime, Mike Flynn is saying we should all have one religion. Like, I'm like, what? Oh, my God, it's like, it's like, I, you know, so, I don't know. Last week, you know, they was in Dallas waiting for JFK to show up. I'm, help me understand, like, I feel like, I don't know, I, I just, I don't know, I, I'm really, I'm trying to understand, like, the politics and the, I, listen. Listen, the blue wave is here, but that red, that red wave over there, that red wave got some issues, some serious issues, and we have to, we have to continue to fight, because, you know, by the time the aliens land and make us all one, one person, we're gonna be one big giant person walking around with one religion, with one president, raising the dead. I mean, it, it sounds crazy, y'all. I didn't say these things. These are things that I have been reading. You know, Pence may run against Trump, Trump is gonna run again in twenty-four, Mike Flynn is gonna be the vice president once JFK come back, and then he gonna have one religion that we all live under. I didn't say this. It's out there.
It's like, it's like truth, truth and honor and facts no longer exist, um.
No.
And, and, and that's sad, you know? Uh, I grew up, about to tell my age, I grew up in, in, in the nineties, and, um, and, and, and as much, and, you know, so I grew up in the nineties, uh, so I remember, uh, the whole Clinton administration, and, and I remember Newt Gingrich and, and Ken Starr and all that, how that played out. And then, uh, and then I remember the, uh, Bush and Gore situation. But then, you know, at that point in time in my lifetime, I felt like that, you know, Bush was like the worst we can get when it came down to, uh, presidents. And I'm from Texas, Bush was a, you know, was the governor of Texas, you know, and it was like, y'all really want him to be our president? Like, he's doing a, a, a horrible job here in Texas, as far as, you know, to the residents of Texas. Uh, Texas businesses were booming, you know, but, you know, we as the regular per- people were, were struggling. And so, I say all that to say is, uh, I would beg for Bush to, for Bush, you know, like, when Trump was in office, it was like, give me Bush back, you know? You know, and you know it's bad when, when, when you have Republican former presidents. H W Bush and W Bush did not support, and does not support, well, H W has passed away, but W Bush does not support Trump at all. You know, you, you have Republican former presidents that, that come out publicly to say, nah, not supporting him. You know, you know, Colin Powell, General Colin Powell, that, that passed recently. He didn't support, uh, uh, Trump, and everybody know that General Powell was a Republican. So, it's like, it's, at some point, I have a friend, I have a real good friend that's a Republican, and, uh, I mess around with him, joke, he's older than I, but I mess around and joke with him, and, uh, but, you know, he, he makes it crystal clear, he does not support Donald Trump. And I was like, ah, well, he can't be Republican, and he'd be like, oh, oh, yes, there is a difference, you know? But, you know, Trump, Trump said it himself, that if he ever ran for president, he would run as a Republican. Uh, and everybody knows that up until he decided to run for president, Trump was a Democrat. Trump supported Democrats, he was at all they weddings, and all of them was at his five weddings. Uh, that's exaggeration, I think he'd been married, what, four times? Uh, and so, it's like, it's just, it's just amazing how, how, how a person who, who was, who was quote-unquote Democrat, publicly, and then switch over to Republican Party, say, talk all this crazy hoopla, and becomes the president. Now, he's the leader of the party, and it's like, I tell everybody, this feels like, uh, that Eddie Murphy movie, when the two billionaires had a bet for a dollar. I can't think of the movie it is right now, but it's when Eddie, what the, what the, what the bet was, they take a homeless person off the street and flip his life with, 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 with the, I can't think of it right now.
The gentleman or something?
Uh, no, uh, I let you talk while I look it up, but it was Eddie Murphy movie where, uh,
I know what you're talking about, too, cuz I, I, I can't remember, I thought it was something gentleman, distinguished gentleman.
I don't know.
The distinguished gentleman. I think it was.
I'm still looking. To find, to go through.
Yeah, but I, I remember, I think that's the one, but you, but you know what's crazy?
No, no, Trading Places.
Trading Places, okay.
That's it. That's what it feel like, it feel like Trump was a bet, a- a- and Trump won, like, Trump, Trump didn't even think he was gonna win this race.
He, he didn't think so, Derek, but he won, like, a lot of us didn't think so. I woke up the next morning, cuz I stayed up most of the night while they just, while, while they were counting the votes, and I was like, I just, I gotta go to bed, because I, I just, I can't. And when I woke up the next morning, they were like, oh, he won, I'm like, oh. And it's, it's only because up until that point, I used to watch The Apprentice, like, that was one of my favorite shows. I fell out of love with it when Randall Pickett won, and he asked the audience, should he make this girl like a president too? We like, well, you have it up until this point, everybody has been, they, they won by themselves, so why should he win with somebody else? So, right, that's when I met him, I fell out with him right there. You know, everybody that know me know I'm a diehard entrepreneur, so I fell out of love, right, I'm like, okay, that sucks, like, why would he have to share his spotlight with somebody? And none of the other one to share, so I felt like there was some racism going on right there. And Randall has, I don't think I've ever heard him say anything against Trump. He did his time, according to the, whatever the contract was, and I've never, and I'm sure he probably got, had to sign a gag order, saying he can't say nothing. Um, cuz I've never heard.
He wrote a whole book.
I'm, she did, but she didn't win either. She, she wrote a book, so I don't know what her gag order was, but Randall, uh, who was from Jersey, um, never, I never, I've never heard him say a word, and I know he has some, some inside dirt, he probably gonna tell when Trump die. But it's probably gonna come out then, like Mary. Anyway,
Yeah.
I feel like a lot of the, a lot of the Republicans who are against him, they do have integrity. You know, I believe in what I believe, but this stuff is just ridiculous, you know what I'm saying? Now, having integrity and being fair,
Uh, two, yeah.
Two different things.
But who would have thought Mick Romney? Mick Romney. Mick Romney was like, Democrats couldn't stand Mick Romney. We felt like he was so disrespectful to Obama during that campaign. We were just like, ah, Mick need to go somewhere. Who, who would have thought that in, in eight years later, or, or four years, five years later, that Mick Romney would have been the, 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 the person that, that the Democrats were like, y'all need to, you know, I mean, listen to this man. Yeah, listen to this man, you know, Mick Romney, John McCain, like, these are people who, you know, well, John McCain has always been on the up and up, we can give him that. Uh, but these are people who we've always, as Democrats, was like, you know, oh, no, you know, we don't, and, 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 and these are the ones that sounded along. You know, one for John McCain, Obamacare, or as they call it, Affordable Health Care would have been, uh, completely destroyed. You know, John McCain was that one vote that voted against it, that shut it down. You know, he came from the hospital to make that vote. Uh, Mick Romney, uh, you know, uh, uh, I can't think of her name, but Dick Cheney's daughter, uh, Liz Cheney.
Liz Cheney.
You know, like, these are names that been in the politic, you know, in the political arena for, for, for decades, as staunch Republicans, and they're like, not like, nah, this is not, this does, he does not represent, uh, me. And we need more of those, and I, I really feel like if the, if, if, if the Congress were to be hardcore, as if, as they would have done, if it was on, on the other way around, if it was a bunch of Democrats that stormed the Capitol and all this and that, a, a Republican Congress would have expelled those, uh, supporters, those elected supporters. It would have been, it would have been jail time and fines. I mean, they're coming, but it's like, some of these fines and jail times are so minute, like, you get more time for a traffic violation for some of the things they get.
I, I wanna, I wanna even bring that back locally, Raffensperger. I mean, he took, he, you know, he was like, listen, the, 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 the presidency was fair, he took a beating for that from his party.
Yeah, he's still taking a beating, him and, uh, him and Kemp. That's the only time I would mention something good about Kemp. But, uh, you know, I mean, they did stand up for the integrity of the election, cuz we all know that this could have been a Florida twenty-two, two, two thousand, where, you know, where, where, where it's interesting that, that the brother of the president, of the, the candidate, it's having to be the governor of that state, and that's the state that caused the, anyhow. But yeah, it could have easily been a, a Florida, two thousand. But yeah, it could have easily been a, a Florida two thousand, you know?
You, you know, so we gotta give credit where credit is due, you know? They did, like the ones that have stood up and said, this is, this is right now, you know, gotta give them credit for that. Because they could have, they could have built up with everybody, they could have walked that line with everybody else and just looked crazy. I, me personally Derek, I'm not walking with you looking like a fool, I don't care who you are. And so that, that's just me, um, I feel, cause I feel like I, I have my own, like I have to live when, when you are gone and you, and it's over. I need to be able to get up in the morning and look in the mirror and say, I still like you Audrey. I guess that just don't matter to a lot of people, like I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't get it and I ain't trying to get it, like we just gotta figure out.
It must didn't matter too much for Kellyanne, cause I don't see how she can look in the mirror. And they talk, and then I felt like all the leaks was coming from her and they trying to figure out where her husband was getting all this, like pillow talk. She was telling her husband, she was giving her husband all the information.
Honey, you can't tell anybody this, now, I'm just telling, don't say anything to anyone, like, I ain't gonna say nothing, I ain't gonna say, Kelly, go and tell me, I ain't gonna say nothing, that's what he was telling me, right?
I think, I think that was her way of trying to deal with her conscience by, by allowing her husband to be the, you know, but how stupid does, does that look? You know, you, you as a wife at a job and your husband publicly bashing your boss. Why you going to work every day?
Because, you know, I think for some of them, it was a chance to be in the spotlight. It was, it was really like a chance to write their own check about things, right? Especially if he had did some really great things and he was, he was well liked, but he wasn't. So, you know, he wasn't well liked by a lot of people. He was, he was liked by his party, by his people, his followers, you know, his, his, his group, you know? He, but there were a lot of other people who didn't, so when you think about some of the people, cause even Omarosa, I was like, really? Like, why lady, why, why, why? You know, it was all kind of speculation, but.
Ben Carson, like.
Carson, oh my God. Oh, like, even now, even now, right, Herschel Walker.
Yeah, yeah.
Shake my head, all I can do is shake my head, you know? With the, the, the election next year is gonna be one series to watch and we gotta see what's gonna happen when, when, when it's time to go to twenty twenty-four. Um, on a local level, we got a lot of stuff, we gotta try to figure out how we gonna make things happen. With, with, what's going on with Gwinnett right now, with our commissioners or the Board of Education. Um, you know, just, just, if you, if you guys had seen, and I got the video, I don't know if I wanna release it though, cause she was really like, just, just very emotional. And you know, what she said to me was, they are trying to make us crazy. And I was like, what? You know, and, and so it's just a lot going on, you know what's crazy Derek? Behind the scenes, like when you see the representatives out in public and stuff, they out there fighting for you, they are fighting. And here's what I found out just yesterday, trust me when I tell you, it ain't no big money involved. When they out there fighting and taking the beating, let me say that, like literally, um, you could spend all the money and gas every month that they get, it's crazy. And I said to Derek, is that all they making? He was like, yes, I was like, oh my God. Life threat, uh, threats to their lives and things like, like Karen Watkins from the Board of Education, that she was in tears yesterday. And she was saying how, you know, Solicitor General Brian Whiteside, um, made sure that he got protection for them, you know? And, and that's scary because you, you take this, you take the stance to help our community better and then people wanna take your life, they wanna threaten your life. But you know, she, she gave Brian his flowers now, because she said without his input, who knows what would have happened? So she and Donna both gave, you know, and a lot of, our DA gave Brian his, his, uh, his flowers and, and, um, uh, uh, Travis, uh, Gadsden gave him his flower. But that goes to show you a man of integrity and a man who said, you know what, I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say and that's gonna be it. So, there are a lot of community leaders who get up there and they sacrifice a lot, a lot to help us. And there are people who don't like what they're doing, some of them don't even know why they don't like it. They just don't like it, cause it's got a big D in front of it, or it's, it's just, it's just nuts, but, um.
And it's amazing when you get into those, um, private moments and, uh, and you know, those, I feel like those are the times where these elected officials are more real, more down to earth, that God is down. And yesterday, even I was taken aback, and I'm around elected officials all the time. I was surprised that, uh, you know, one in particular, I mean, wait, two of them, but this one in particular started, like she was crying over the, the amount of, not even the pressure, just how, how frustrating it is to be in her position. And then how the GOP is just trying blatantly racism, blatant, uh, sexism, blatant any other isms that you can think of. And how frustrated that, that, that she was, that she started crying, like, and, and.
Not once, but twice, y'all.
Yeah, and so it's like, and I mind you, this is not a, 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 a public thing where she was like, oh, there goes some cameras. He would let me, let me, you know, let my hair, let me start crying. This was like intimate, one, you know, conversation amongst friends and she was like, y'all, this is, this is serious. You know, not to mention that, you know, then, you know, the death threats and like no one, I mean, I've been in that position where I volunteered to run for office. You know, you don't, you don't say, hey, I wanna, I wanna run for this office so I can, someone can kill me. You know, so I can get some death threats, you know, you're not nobody unless you get some death threats. Like, no, no one volunteers for that. And then to get those, uh, I mean, it's, 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 it's crazy.
It's unnerving to think about, tell you true, it's unnerving to think about, especially when you got a family. And, and I could tell you that when, when, when those, when those people ran for office, their whole family run. Derek know, like, the whole, like, not only does a candidate run, the family runs, the entire family, pretty much the circle. If you're in the circle at that time, you're, you're running right along with the candidate. So it's not just a, a position that the candidate holds himself, his entire family holds that, that, that commitment to the county, to the, to the position. And that being said, a lot of times you have to fear for your family, not just yourself, because people are crazy right now.
Right, you gotta fear for your kids, your grandkids, you know? And mind you, you know, we don't get the protection as the president or, or governor. Uh, I mean, crazy enough, uh, I saw the mayor of, of, of Atlanta. I mean, she has security, like top notch security because, because of, because of the threats, you know? And then you and I found out that district attorneys, they have top notch security. They ride around like, you know, with top notch security because of the threats, like, no one, no one, no, at the end of the day, this is a job, you know? Uh, and, and no one should lose their, lose their life for, for one stepping up to, to make a difference in the community. And then two, for going to work, you know? And, and it's just, it's just sad that, you know, here in twenty twenty-one, politics, the, 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 the US as a whole politi-, you know, political system is almost going backwards. Almost like we're going back to the, to the, to the era of Jim Crow where you, you was a, you know, N I G G, you know, let you fit, you know, finish the rest, but you know, we're going back to those days, you know? Because it, it, now it's blatant, you know, it was blatant in those days and, and you know, it kinda died down a little bit, but now it's blatant again. And, and you know, it's just, it's just sad. And then we always hear, you know, all, you know, get over it, it was so long ago. And, 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 and I have a problem with that because we, you know, every other group, every other, uh, racial ethnicity group have, you know, they get their days of memories. You know, even now, uh, you have the immigrants who separate from their kids, you know, uh, the government is, is, is basically uh, willing to get them payment for, for that separation where, uh, you know, if you go down a list, all these other groups have received payments, the Native Americans, the Irish, the Hispanics now. Uh, African Americans have yet to receive any form of compensation. We're supposed to get forty acres in a moo- mule, if you got your forty.
I still want my forty acres.
Yeah, but if you got your forty acres in a mule, it was taken from you, yeah, they took it from you. So, uh, I mean, we have to do better and, 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 and I, I wish that we get to the point where society was to stop telling black people to just get over it, it was so long ago. You know, why we, you know, like Mitch McConnell saying some said about, you know, paying a debt that was hundreds of years ago? Well, how about we pay the debt that was sixty years ago of Jim Crow? Jim Crow ended in the sixties or seventies, one of them. Jim Crow ended, you know, back then, I have, I have family members that are old enough to remember when they was, when school desegregated. You know, anybody that's seventy and up, which is a lot of the population, they remember Jim Crow. So it wasn't that long ago when you still got people living that, that, that actually went through it. You know, I have family members that call, uh, uh, JFK Jack, Jack Kennedy. They had his picture in the house.
Yes, that's right.
I have family members that was around that, you know, we call him Dr. King. You know, they talking, oh yeah, I remember when Martin was around, who's Martin? Martin Luther King, Derek, oh, 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 I didn't know, you knew the man like that. You know, so, you know, is, we can get on that soapbox, but I just wish that the government as a whole, you know, at one point it felt like we was progressing, now it seem like we're going back. You know, the Republicans are trying to do whatever they can to hold on to power and it's, and it's ridiculous. And, um, you know, we have to do better, we have to do better.
And the way for us to do that, guys, is to make sure you get out there and vote. Listen, your vote matters, it really does matter. Um, believe it or not, I know you think it's a, it's a waste of time most of the time, but when you look around you at some of the things that you don't like, just know that your vote could have, your, your vote could have changed that. So make sure that you get out there and vote in every election. And I know we have some and sometimes it's like, okay, I didn't know I was supposed to vote. Check your, check your local listing, they'll tell you what seats are coming available, go out and vote. Before you, before that day, make sure that you check and see where you're registered at, because that has been a huge problem. Last year, I could tell you this, last year, um, I remember going to vote and I normally vote on the last day Derek, at the last hour. That's normally how I do, my husband and I would go like six, six o'clock in the evening, we'll go vote. This time we didn't do that, we was like, no, we gonna go early, because we don't know what kind of flim flim they would have going on. Sure enough, there was a young lady in line, she was pregnant. So we vote and we vote in, um, in Lawrenceville on, um, um, Grayson Highway, she was pregnant. She had came, they sent her from Wynder, which is about twenty-five minutes away from, oh, to, to, to Lawrenceville, just ready to get to Lawrenceville and they said, you're not registered here and she's like, I'm not doing this. And I said, no, 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 I had to stop her, so listen, that's exactly what they want, they want you not to vote. Don't get frustrated, she was pregnant, I'm sure she was tired, you know, I said, don't do that. That's what they want you to do, they wanna frustrate you, so your vote is not counted. You go, miles along, I said, you go and you find out where you're supposed to vote at and you cast your vote no matter what. And she's like, okay, yes ma'am, you know.
You go to, you go to jail for handing out water, you go to jail for handing out food, it's, it's, it's crazy.
So listen, this year, when, listen, when it's time to get in the long lines, listen, get y'all a sub sandwich, right?
Hey, go ahead and pack your cooler, so you can have something to sit on too.
Get, get the kind that you sit on, right? Get that kind with the look, you roll it.
Yeah, with the wheels, yeah.
And just, you know, be prepared.
Download some movies on your phone.
Download some movies, make sure your phone fully charged, because they are trying everything to stop us from voting and that is our right, our right.
It's always in the minority, low income areas.
Always in low.
I've never seen Buckhead with a line.
No, and you probably never will, you probably never will, so. Listen Derek J Wilson, it is time for you to go say hello to your family, it is one of you and you are late and I probably, no, it's two oh two, two oh three. Um, so Derek, Derek has a family meeting every Sunday and I, you know, I take him away and I apologize family, but, um, I really appreciate him here co-hosting with me, cause you know, we are, we have to get the word out. We have to make sure that you are, you are an informed person, so you can make the right decisions when it comes to you, your community and your family. Because unless you vote, we can't change things, so I appreciate you for being here with us.
I wanna do a, a shout out to Nikita Hemingway, we was having technical difficulties earlier. But her website is nikthahemingway.com, please visit her website. Uh, if you interested in donating or volunteering, uh, please do so. Uh, because that is definitely needed, a campaign, she's running a statewide race for Agriculture Commissioner. She will be the first black and the first woman to ever hold a seat in the state of Georgia, so let's help her make some history.
That's right, and listen, if you are a farmer, she says she farms, she's a farm girl and she's a tech head altogether, so that's a, that's a double winner. You might wanna reach out to her and say, listen, what do I need to do to farm? We need to grow our own foods, we don't know what we're eating, we don't know what they're feeding the cows, we don't know what they putting on the grass. We need to understand that whole thing, so we can eat better and we have better health, all right, all right? So all we got for today, we'll be back again, uh, next Sunday, God willing to bring you more popcorn and politics, Wednesday we gonna have some popcorn. Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, we gonna probably start at the beginning of the year with popcorn and politics, with the real popcorn that, that could be purchased. Uh, and, uh, you know, love for you guys to try it out, the popcorn is good, y'all.
It's delicious, y'all, it's sad because I'm not a popcorn lover and I had a big bag, the bag was like this, the bag was literally like that big. And I didn't wanna share my popcorn with anybody, but we're gonna, I, I'll, I'll drop it next time, so y'all, so at the beginning of the year, we gonna be eating popcorn on, on Sunday. And, and we'll tell y'all again how we came up with the name popcorn and politics. But anyway, thank you guys for listening, we'll be back again next Sunday to bring you more popcorn and politics. My co-host Derek J Wilson, you go and say hello to your family for me. Listen, stay safe out there, remember to hug your family, love them, and until next time, I'm good people, until next time, make it a great day, bye now.
You've been listening to Popcorn and Politics, What's the Real Deal? Hosted by Andre Bell Kearney and Derek J Wilson. Be sure to subscribe to the show and share it with your family and friends. To support the show, visit us on the web at www-popcornandpolitics.com. Connect with us on Facebook at Progressive Popcorn and on Instagram at Popcorn Politics Podcast.